All right, well, welcome to the business meeting of February eighth for Middle Smithfield Township. And please join us in the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the flag of which we stand on Monday in this world, the United States of America. Okay, so we apologize for those who will watch this later. And for those who are on Zoom now, we don't know why our owl is sick, but maybe the people from the
The owl was sick last night in Smithfield, so it must be the brand.
Yeah, so you won't be able to see anything, but you can hear us. And if there's something you can hear, just focus on Zoom, raise your hand in the chat, or give a shout out. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with January twenty fifth. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pat, can we have a report of executive session?
Uh, certainly before this evening's regular meeting, board that executive session, discuss legal and litigation, and decision permitted, and vote complete.
Thank you. And that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. And we had a guest this evening in the audience from Pocono Wildlife Rehabilitation and Education Center. And we're really sorry that the folks on Zoom can't see it because they brought everything.
We will if you ask.
Cool. So would you like to make a presentation?
They're pushing me up here again.
Aw. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Is there anybody who's on tap the other, by the way? For anybody who's not familiar with Pocono. Last night was a little sketchy, we weren't sure about that. So I'm glad that everybody gets who we are. And that for you just as a little backup from Tyra Cruz. We are here for a couple of reasons. First of all, there are new directors at the Wildlife Center. Which some of you know I've been working on for a long time and finally found the very best people in the whole wide world. That is Susan Downing, and that is Janine Tancredi. They have now taken over the directorship of the Wildlife Center. I have contrary popular opinion or understanding, I am still with the center. I am now the Director of Educational Programming. That's another stuff. Al, et cetera, it's people like that. So I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea about what the center is for those of you who may not really know what we do. I know, you know, we take care of wild animals. That is the name of the Wildlife Center, obviously. Although the name has changed a little bit to the Wildlife, it's a Pocono Wildlife Rehab Center. Still same basic in the same place, it has the same functions. We take care of injured, working wildlife for the purpose of getting them back to the wild. But there are some reasons why we do this. First of all, we're not a domestic animal rescue. Domestic animal rescues pretty much have to have a penal license. And many a couple of people have to go to school for some animal welfare things. But that's about it. Wildlife rehab is a licensed tactic. This is not something you're allowed to do anymore. It began to take federal laws for you to take care of wildlife. And there's reasons for that. This is not the old days. When I was kidding in the Poconos, we didn't have rabies in the Poconos when I was a child. Did you know that? It was brought here by some people who brought raccoons up for hunting dogs to learn how to hunt. Whatever dogs who was raccoons, I don't know. But it was brought up from Florida. So we didn't even have rabies back then. We didn't have to worry about things. But now we have, they did a study, forty percent of deer have antibodies to COVID. So if you decide to pick up a baby fawn, it no longer is just picking up a baby fawn. We have human health risks now. We have diseases and injuries that can happen to people. That is a very big deal. We now finally have a wildlife disease lab in Pennsylvania. And Janine and Susan work very closely with them so that we can track emerging diseases. That's not the little old lady down the road who takes care of wildlife. You gotta have equipment for that. This is the first organization in the state that has an X-ray machine. Why? It's about that. You have to do that. That means that we're noticing birds that are shot, which is taking federal regulations. So they're working with law enforcement. There's a tremendous amount going on. And of course, the educational component, which I now enjoy this, probably the single most important part in terms of human health and safety. You find a snake in your backyard and you don't know what it is, you can text us a picture. We can tell you what it is. We can tell you what to do. Sometimes, you know, it's very easy to say, leave it alone. Go on to Saw Creek, help people leave it alone. If they're grown up, they're gonna be comfortable with that. You gotta give people their job. That's our job is to be able to get people to be comfortable with wildlife in the Poconos. Assimilating the people in is a very big job, and it's a very important job. Because the first day they come here, they call me and say, there's a bear in my tree. Now, you can laugh at that, but that's not gonna help them at the moment. So there's a tremendous amount of education. We do programs in schools, we do programs for senior citizen groups, we do programs for your community, we do programs all over the place. But we also do education via telephone, via email, via text, via Facebook. And those are really important jobs. So the problem is now, it's more than what we can deal with financially just by twenty-five dollar donations and open houses and dinners and paint sets, which we do all of those things. But we're now at a point where you can't just run this with pure volunteer. You have to have some paid staff because this requires licensing, which requires education and passing taxes and all the other stuff. And insurance, which you can imagine what our insurance is, dealing with wildlife. Bringing wildlife back to presentations. So we are now embarking on a new task where we are now going to every single municipality in the nine counties we serve. Because there isn't anybody else doing this in nine counties. To ask them to pitch in at the line I have you. It doesn't have to be a lot, we're looking at like, and you guys already help out. So we're not, we're pitching kind of to the choir here, but we have to do everybody because we really need help, and we need it now. Things are very tight right now. They have tightened their purse strings, they really have. But, you know, it's, we're, it's like, if you want there, you see, we're not, we're not doing anything we can afford to cut here and there unless you want to cut me, which they might if it gets that bad. Not that it's something that's a lot, but it's really scary at this point. I mean, I've never really had to do this before. So that's part of the problem is that we've managed for forty years. Well, managing for forty years and being able to provide the kinds of services we need to provide at no cost to this community just can't happen now. So we're looking for fifteen hundred dollars here from everybody's budget. If everybody can pitch in that much, we know that we've got our electric bills, the things that nobody wants to, you know, pay for. They all want to pay for formula. And that's nice, but without the lights on, we can't see the heat that formula. So we really need that help. So whatever you can pitch in, we really need your help. You want to speak about media need, or did I do that?
Uh, we did that. We're really, we are in a clash, flow crisis. And we're really looking to get as much help from all of these families that we possibly can.
Does anybody have questions for us? We're sitting here now, so this is the time to learn about Pocono Wildlife. Because we're providing services to you. You should know what we do and be able to call us when you need help.
How much did I? Not a lot. Well, you're already very helpful every time we call to have a presentation on human animal conflict. And who already comes to our new resident meeting agrees, which are now open to the public. So that the public knows what to do when going around at home, they have average, average things like squirrels and yadda, or bats and yadda, or things like that. So you're right. I mean, do you have any questions on what they do? Anybody? Or the services that they provide?
Oh, one bigger service that we can provide now is that these guys are both certified in caper and transport, which you guys have no idea what licenses and all this, but we, this is an example. We have a Hunter County Commissioner, who I will remain nameless, who has some rental properties. And one of the things, since we've talked about skunks and some reasons, even, skunks, for some reason, because they're very nearsighted, they tend to do things like fall into window wells. Do you guys know what window wells are? Getting them out of window wells can be a completely confounding thing for human beings. And so this particular county commissioner called and Eric actually went and knocked them out. But like, you know, you have to call a wildlife pest control company to do that. Wait for them to do it, and it would cost you a couple hundred dollars just to take some skunks and remove them from your window well. Well, we can do that. There are some other stories they can tell, but I don't want to take up the whole meeting. But we are available as, on this, as they have time basis to help out with even coming out and doing restoration, I'm in mind. Are you guys SARP here?
No.
Okay.
No.
One of the things we think about, everyone tell me the story about.
Quick question. Yeah, they don't have animal control in that area. Neither do they. They call
You don't have people.
Yeah, so there is two, a gentleman and his girlfriend had locked themselves in the room for a period of twenty-four hours because they
Like the deer.
Oh, we're We go on the flip phone, there's a mess, we're speeding off, because there's no animal control. So we're getting calls for everything. Penn State's got called out, there was a buck that had exposed back leg. Jay Commission had called us to go out and look into it. The police were there, the security from Penn State's was there, and they were all arguing over who's gonna shoot this deer. They didn't want to do paperwork on the bullet, on the dispatch. So low and behold, Susan and I wanted to dispatch the deer in Penn State's. So it's just one example of
This is what you run into.
We also go on domestic, unfortunately, because these people have nobody in the state or
They're not advertising that they want to do this.
No.
In an emergency, these people answer their phone at least twenty hours of that.
It is animal control, it's an issue for all the municipalities in this area. And it falls on us. Like today was the first prime example. Hey, I have a raccoon in my backyard. He wasn't in the program.
Was.
Yeah, but she's coming in and she may already get her baby. So I had to talk this woman off the roof and get her to understand about, it's okay, they coming out of, not, they don't hibernate, but they're grooming, coming out and it's mating season. And all you have to do is put some powder urine or bright lights or, and I talked her off the roof because nobody else would come, nobody else would come out. Nobody else would talk to her about it. And I got her to the point where she was calm enough to go, okay, I can try this. So they just, other than, they need reassurance and they need to know that there's somebody that they can
And they need a job. They need a job, they got a task. You can't just say leave it alone, you gotta give them something, they can. Those are the kinds of things that we do on a daily basis.
Thank you for your show, Liz. I think it's a
Oh, we need to do it as a community now. It just needs to be different.
I think the gentleman who backed us
Whatever it's worth as a taxpayer in Middle Smithfield, I do support any of these funds for these.
Thank you, thank you. I know it doesn't I'm a taxpayer too. But when I'm saying when you need somebody, it's nice to have somebody at the other end of the line. Bad things we have.
I have owned my property, owned it a few times.
Well, I live here for you.
That's why the fund is good.
Well, thank you. All these supervisors have seen you announcing, you know, here. So we thank you for what you do. We realize that the calls that you get would most likely come here if they didn't call you. And there's many people that refer you. So thank you. All right, do you have anything? All right, well, thank you, thank you for the presentation. We're happy to support you in whatever ways, perfection. So, and then, and we'll be in touch too, because I have a few questions on whether or not you can use volunteers.
Actually, always, always. The biggest issue right now is consistency with volunteers. We had, I put a tweet up on Facebook, you know, we desperately need volunteers. We get a fundancy of
We've had a high response.
And hundred responses. And I can count on one hand the ones that come back after working the full day, aren't you? They don't really think that it's just cuddling and, you know, it's not. It's cleaning up pieces of dirt.
Cleaning the case.
You know, it's not realist and people don't usually come back after the purchase. So it's really difficult to get volunteers.
It's just not comparable to domestic animal rescue in any way, except for the fact that we're working with that.
Well, thank you. I guess we are constantly looking for volunteers.
Okay, and that was a question, do you guys have a chance to license in the township?
You have to apply for
You don't have one, I would know.
No, we don't have one.
Okay, just a question.
Okay, a couple of announcements and upcoming events. Pocono Wildlife Rehabilitation and Education Center is looking for volunteers. If you, we put the, the tax bills are gonna come out March first. So just FYI for anyone that's here, we put the tax, what you're gonna get as an insert in your tax bill, speaking of tax, over on the side table. It explains on how to read your tax bill because, you know, it's not quite as complicated as your cell phone bill, but we thought people should know where their taxes are going and how their money is being spent and how to read your tax bill. So that's over on the side. The preview of 2024 will be on February twenty-second. That's something that the township does every year where we give a presentation to our public. And the staff puts this together, and the staff gives a presentation of the projects that they have for the upcoming year. That will be Thursday, seven o'clock on February twenty-second. We wanted to congratulate Violet on her successful ribbon cutting. Violet Stanford, the children, her thrift store that is over in the Dutchman Plaza. Marshals Creek Fire Company had their award dinner recently. And we just wanted to congratulate Norm Fish Senior on his fifty-five years of service to the fire company, still going strong. And also Tom Rhodes Senior for his forty-five years of service, still going strong, volunteering for the fire company. And last but not least, who are actually Dylan Younger in the audience, and he may have some public comment on non-agenda item, you know, in a minute. But Sambo Creek is, the four municipalities that that creek runs through are consolidating in an effort to rename that creek with the U.S. Geological Survey. And here's a public meeting for that at four P.M. on Monday, February twelve. It's a hybrid meeting. Smithfield has taken lead in coordinating this and rejuvenating this after. So I just thought I'd throw that out there for anybody who'd like to learn more. So that said, and I apologize, I did not, after Pocono Wildlife Rehabilitation, ask if anybody else had any public comments on any non-agenda item. And is that you sending us in?
Yeah.
Okay, Danny Younger, this is a Middle Smithfield resident, and he also is involved with the Middle Smithfield Historical Commission.
Right, I got you, man. Back in two thousand and eight, it was that we wanted to see two concurrent petitions being submitted to the Federal Board of Geographic Names. At that time, National Park Service Superintendent Don Yule submitted one petition that basically says, we want to take the name of Sambo Island and change it to Turtle Island. At the same time, the folks from the Broadhead Water Association put through an initiative that said, okay, we also want to change the local name, that of Sambo Creek. Right. Superintendent Don Yule Creek Dale, he was a previous coordinator, and Sambo Island was in fact renamed Turtle Island.
Named what?
Turtle.
Turtle. The other folks did not hear that one. As they didn't apparently have complete documentation, so basically, you have to document everything up there. So the matter was made in abeyance for a period of time. And finally, somebody here locally decided to pick up the football again and run with it. That's where we're at at the moment. So having looked into the matter recently and provided some historical background on the situation, I just thought that I would share my own personal comments simply because at one point soon, this municipality is gonna have to weigh in on the overall decision. Do they approve the idea of the name change? And do they approve the new name that's being suggested? So what are my initial thoughts? Having thought about it first, first thing I'd like to say is that this creek was named two hundred and seventy-five years ago. It was named before we were even a country, right? And all of a sudden now, we've got this initiative going where a certain set of folks are saying, all right, currently, we find the name Sambo to be offensive and derogatory, and as such, we want it removed from the geographical name registry. For example, that maybe because I'm an old guy, all right? Maybe because I've got fixed chin, maybe it's because I'm not as political correct as I should be, or perhaps not as sufficiently sentiment as one should be in this particular generation. But I can think back to a time in this country when we had millions upon millions of American citizens frequently ate a particular restaurant named Sambo's. Right? We remember this chain. It was a massive national chain. A thousand one hundred seventeen units spread across forty-seven different states. And at every single one of these restaurants, they had heroes up on the wall that were to depict the story of the little black sanctuaries. All right, and what was that story essentially? Well, we're dealing with a dark-skinned child from the country of India who had his adventure with four tigers. As a result of that particular adventure, Sambo prevailed. The tigers found themselves chasing each other in a circle faster and faster and faster and faster until they finally melted into this one giant blob of tiger butter. Well, Sambo's family was delighted, they had tiger butter to be able to eat. They brought home a whole flock to it. And Sambo then cooked them up a delicious meal of a hundred sixty-nine candies. All right, well, this is the story that has got everybody's niggard in a bunch. The way that I look at it is perhaps different than that. Because I'm the type of person that says, all right, look, we've got itself history. And in the broad scheme of things, we've got the good, we've got the bad, we've got the ill. And there is no doubt that certain words in our language today do carry a fair amount of racial animus. But that said, unlike folks that want to tear down Confederate statues, for example, I'm the type of person that says, look, we accept history for what it is, and we work with it. We use the fact that we have creek names Sambo to point out to our youth. That, yeah, we can't really do this, we're in our country. And we can address the story locally from that point of view. So I for one do not see a value in striking this name from the record. You know, I look at this situation and I say to myself, how ironic. Here we are in the middle of Black History Month. And what they're asking us to do is to take Whiteout, to block history, and erase a black man's name. Right, I'm uncomfortable. I think we've got a better way of tackling the problem than going on this. My thought, I figured I'd get it out there because I seem to be standing alone in the front side of the bench. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call, Doc. Is there anyone else that has public comment on any item that is not on the agenda? All right, thank you for your comments. Committee and department reports, they're over on the side for anyone who wants them, like or more. Do you have anything that you wanted to point out from any of your committees? Or anything to highlight?
No.
No, okay. But I'm wishing to accept your words. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Michelle, is there any correspondence?
There was actually a correspondence that came in the mail today. It's a thank you letter from Violet Stanford for the grand opening, excuse me, that was given for her business, the township staff, EDC manager, James Breckville, worked very hard on the opening. And she had provided a letter to the supervisors and to James.
Thank you. And that brings us to the treasures report.
Yeah, a motion from our general fund, one hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from our sewer account, one hundred and nine thousand, thirty dollars and forty cents.
All second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion from our golf account, ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion from our liquid fuels account, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Michael. I just wanted to add that this will be an off-cycle check. We can ratify it at the next meeting. But we owe the sewer company another twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. So I don't think anyone disagrees with that as far as their next payment. Do you miss the district report?
Thank you. The one item on our report in the procedure for the disbursement are funds from the fire tax revenue. The board made a recall, we asked, or had discussed how the anticipated fire tax revenue would be dispersed. So what's, and we had a discussion at prior meeting as well. So what I've prepared is a draft resolution providing for at least an initial preliminary plan or guideline with respect to how the tax fire, or the fire tax revenue will be dispersed by the township to the, I believe, three fire companies that serve the township. So I think, I don't know if you want to go through it this evening. If you have comments, questions, or concerns, or changes. There are some blanks. The blanks are the, you can see in section one, up to blank percent to Marshals Creek Fire Company, up to blank percent to Bushville Fire, going to Fire Company, and up to blank percent to the Shawnee Fire Company. As well, there's also blanks with respect to the distance you anticipate that those fire companies maintain allocation from the township. And then the other, the other provisions, conditions, requirements associated with the resolution relate to the potential fire protection service being provided, compliance with all applicable laws and regulations, the ability to respond to emergencies within the township, and as well as certain reports to be provided to the township, and financial statements to be provided to the township. So has the board want to discuss certain items with respect to the draft resolution at this time? Or?
If you have a little challenge to it?
Honestly, from my perspective, I'd like to speak to the other townships. See what, where they're headed, also get input from the fire and EMS. And then we can circle back and
Well, this is just the fire.
Well, whatever. Then get, at least for this document, have comment from our fire departments. If they want add or have questions of, whatever they have, and then we can circle back with another draft. But again, I'd like to see what the other township to make sure that we're all being consistent. At least in our
Okay. Does the board want me to draft a similar? I only drafted the one for fire, because I wasn't sure if this is the direction or this is what you were looking for. Would you like me to hold off on the one for the ambulance, EMS apps? Or do you want me to prepare a similar type of resolution to that as well?
I mean, I think we said this is a more simplified way of attacking it rather than,
Correct.
you know, trying to entourage different
I mean, the show is the same.
Right.
And we're just gonna talk amongst ourselves about what the performance standard
Correct.
to reach the
Same, same fire, correct.
So
You want to put a similar draft together for
Yeah.
for EMS?
Yes.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you, that's the only item on our report. If you have some, probably comments on more, too, additional agenda items for the uh, additional items for the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, engineers' report.
Yeah, there's, yeah, just one item, uh, to discuss, and that's regarding the Otter Lake, uh, resort storage building uh, projects, uh, as part of their developers agreement, they would put forward financial security, uh, brought in forty-two thousand and ninety-seven dollars to cover, uh, all of the proposed improvements that were, uh, associated with that project. Uh, we were informed, I think it was the beginning of this week, that they were looking to have that security released, so Kevin Miller, or the construction observer, was able to swing by the property on Monday, took a look at everything, and installed everything uh, in accordance with the approved plan, um, so I'm comfortable with the township releasing, uh, the entirety of that forty-two thousand and ninety-seven dollars uh, in financial security. So that'd be that, against the motion tonight, it'd be to uh, release the entirety of that financial security.
So, Mark, have you reviewed it?
Motion.
Mark, Mark, you make that one to...
Yeah.
On second, any comments or questions?
You have an ad build?
Ad builds, uh, I totally put it over that. The, uh, the ordinance says that it's actually only requiring storm waters involved, and in that case, they provide a narrative they were under the purpose coverage to where storm water, there was no stormwater features actually required. So evidence they installed, um, when he was out there was in accordance with the plans, and, um, there's something in a ordinance that requires and has to um, in a case like this, so.
Okay.
There actually had assumed three thousand dollars for that effort on there.
Right.
I think that was just a above and beyond what was needed, just wasn't called at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Ben. Uh, here is now old business. So moving on to new business, um, I would make a motion to adopt resolution zero-two dash twenty-four dash one, which is to dispose of certain records.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would also, uh, well, first of all, does the board have any, um, changes to this request for proposal on wastewater treatment plant operator RFPs? Have you had a chance to review it and... I know there are, uh, there's, there's a note on page one, what's labeled page one, and we've also, page, uh...
Right. So this is, uh, so the RFP for professional service, basically the wastewater treatment plant operator. Uh, one item I'd like to, I guess, give guidance to is, uh, the timeframe. You want to give us out what timeframe you want them to be able to respond to the RFP. Uh, and then probably the more subtle piece is part of the RFP is a form agreement to wastewater treatment plant operator. And in there, there is a provision on page three, related purchases of any expense of, uh, on behalf of the township, shall be approved in advance by an officer of the township acting in emergency, but then towards the end does say, no unbudgeted emergency purchase beyond blank shall be permitted without prior consent of the town. So, five things, so really that's in the case of an emergency, that I, that I, something needs to be purchased to to address, mitigate, control the emergency before actually getting formal approval from the township. A certain threshold amount should be included.
Oh, I, I would suggest five thousand dollars.
You put a low, no?
Oh.
There you go.
Without any approval for an emergency?
Well, I mean, it's an emergency, then.
I mean, I, I find it hard that nobody could get a hold of any one of us in an emergency, in an emergency.
Agreed. I mean, so I don't think it would even commit to play, but that's fine. I mean, five thousand, I guess.
Well, what would you suggest?
I, I, actually, I was thinking twenty. I mean, it's a well, two million dollar operation, twenty thousand dollars, one percent.
Yeah, but I, I...
I would suggest keeping it a little lower, because otherwise, I don't know, listen, I don't know who the sewer plant operator's gonna be, uh, but in the event that it's...
And, and then saying, well, I tried and your number was busy, so I just went and spent twenty thousand dollars.
Right, but the shame, if the number is busy, if it's two o'clock in the morning, you know, I don't want to wait till...
Keep trying. Okay, so, so you think twenty?
Well, no, I mean, I don't know. Listen, what do you think? Ten? Five? Five? Doesn't matter. I mean, like you said, I, I don't think this would ever come into play for us.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, too, is that the lead time on a lot of stuff, once you get us that price tag, you're not hitting it immediately anymore.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know how often it's happening.
Right.
So.
So if you want to fight that, that's fine by me.
Okay.
Oh, it's page six.
Uh, page six would be the date, so when did we wanna, you know, so the initial term of this agreement should be from blank to blank. Should be from the opening until the seventh of August, you know?
One thing to make very clear, this is professional service, so it's not a competitive bid. This is an RFP, uh, we're looking to just, oh, for professionals.
Right, right.
But I mean, I think we have, even if we got the bid in the March, or whatever my thought is. Right, so that's March, April, if you're changing people, you're gonna need some time. I would say like June of this year to end the venture.
Well, why couldn't this...
We can, we can leave, remember, this is the, these are our opinions, so you can leave that blank until you know, you know, what, what response you're gonna get from the, uh, RFP and the timeframe associated with it. I mean, listen, you can put in dates, but you know, that's something I'm, I'm comfortable just leaving open. I would say maybe, are we looking at a one-year term, two-year term, one, I mean, that's really what I'm looking for.
I, I would say one year and have a review, because it's, if you're changing somebody.
It says automatically for one-year term.
After the initial.
Right.
So should we say, really, the date I'm looking for is through December thirty-one, are we saying twenty twenty-four?
By the time this goes out, yeah, it's twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Through December of twenty...
Well, what I could do is I could change the initial term. Uh, shall be a one-year term from blank to blank, and then whenever you end up, um, awarded the RFP, it'll just say, it'll start on that, whenever that...
Right, because you, I mean, annually, doesn't have to always be a calendar.
Right, so one-year term.
Right.
And we'll just leave the blanks for the dates.
Right.
And one other piece to this, and Michelle and I kind of talked briefly about it. So this is our thing with the professional services. You don't have to advertise this if you don't want to. You can, I mean, I, I don't know how many of these professional service providers for wastewater treatment plant operator are out there. You can send them the RFP, you can send, you know, the list of, uh, entities or contractors that you know of, these are RFPs, or you can put in the, advertise for it. It's something where there's nothing, it's professional service, it's not a required process that you put out there. So.
Do we have a list of...
No, and that was the thing with the engineers' RFP. We know a lot of engineering firms between here and Allentown and Scranton, you know? So, but as far as, um, sewage treatment plant operators, wastewater treatment plant, I know of one. And they're our operator now. And I know, you know, the newspaper will have it online for thirty days.
We have to advertise this?
No, that's what he's talking about. You don't, you don't have to, but who am I gonna send it to?
Right.
Right, but why? I wouldn't put it in the open record, it'd be right back in our school fund.
Again, who am I going to send it to without having them request for a copy of the RFP? Am I, you know, I'm, I'm asking, am I Googling this to say wastewater treatment plant and then sending it out in hopes of? I don't know. It's...
There are other publications we can advertise it to, like Philly Independent.
Right.
You know, along the, along the corridor.
Yeah.
We, that's what happened last night. We advertised this in several papers and got minimal results.
Yeah.
So I would say through that one. So...
Or presets.
Yeah.
Presets are pretty huge now.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, we're advertising. And we'll be aware of it. And then you had some blanks on article five. I think that's something that should be a suggestion.
No, article five is gonna be whatever they post.
What they suggest.
Yeah, that has to stay.
Okay. Alright.
So yeah, the way this is set up, here's how it's clear. This is set up as a platinum treaty from whoever is gonna propose or submit proposals for the wastewater treatment plant provider, operator. If there's a different approach, the township wants to have, you let me know. Right now, it's set up as a platinum treaty. That's how this is compared. I'm not sure how you'd refer an operator out of this, but is it a flat fee, is it?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, the only other item is the dates. Uh, for how long do you want to do this up and accept proposals?
I would say at least three months.
Three months?
Yeah, because, I mean, it's gonna, you advertise it once, or maybe twice in metropolitan area, and then we look to see who we can find to send it to.
They're gonna have to be close enough to be at the plant every day, though.
I was about, you're pretty much going to Scranton, town, and...
And that's why.
Yeah.
I think it's also good, and good, but...
I don't know, I think...
Something.
The last time, somebody from Maryland called.
Yeah.
And was convinced that they could do this, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, discount Philadelphia. But... You think that's too long?
So on page one, it would be proposals must be delivered to the township owner before blank. What do you want to put in there?
On stage four, you think?
When Michelle and I were talking about that, I, my personal thought was, I think the shortest you would go is six weeks, like a month and a half.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how much longer you want to go on. I mean, anytime you do a public bid for a job, like, four weeks is time for anybody. Lots of people are not putting together proposals very often.
Agreed.
Two or two less, meaning equal. And then here?
Mm-hmm, April eighteen.
April eighteen?
About ten, twenty-fifth is our last, I mean.
Of, of eight?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so do it twenty-fifth, three bucks.
April twenty-fifth?
No.
Okay.
Almost three months, yeah, two and a half months.
So what was the date?
April twenty-fifth.
Owner before April twenty-fifth.
Right. So just one, one more than you already had in here.
I don't think I can get any.
No idea.
Watch somebody.
Oh.
Ben and I did, just to fill a blank.
Who did?
Ben and I did.
Oh, okay, that's the same. The ones I brought are still blank.
No, I was thinking, well, he, he said, Michelle, give them some time.
Yeah. What else?
Michelle is itching for a spot.
Okay, thank you. I'll make those, like, changes circulated in America, Michelle.
In the middle of the day. Yeah, so I would lift the motion that, um, the solicitor is authorized to advertise um, once these changes have been made.
Second.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye. I think a motion authorized a purchase of twenty twenty-three F three fifty four by four Supercat from Cox thirty-three of Co-Stars.
Twenty.
Um, is this one placing that according?
It will, um, it will be putting one oh nine, which is a Ford F three fifty, uh, for sale.
And will we pay that liquid fuel?
Um, if Bonnie's understanding is correct, yes, thirty-one thousand of it, thirty-one, whatever that number is, will we pay that liquid fuel of thirty-one?
Oh, I thought the whole fifty-eight.
No.
The whole fifty-eight thousand of the cost will be paid out of liquid fuels.
No. Again, Bonnie, I, I call into our district five rep um, to confirm that Bonnie's assumption was, or, or understanding is correct. I don't believe so, but it could be...
Well, could we table this to the February, the last, the next February, it's only two weeks?
No, I don't, like I say, we have to, I mean...
Well, I'd like to sort out how we're gonna pay for it first before we authorize it.
Well, it's either gonna be fully funded out of the general funds, or thirty-one thousand of it will be paid from liquid fuels and the balance will be from general funds.
Why a general fund?
Well, that's what we have a budget. We budgeted for, for his vehicle, or vehicles.
You didn't have a list.
No, we didn't have specific, that's correct. We have vehicle purchases in general funds every year.
And how much is that?
That was sixty pounds. I can pull it up, or maybe show it. I think it'd be more than that. I think it's sixty pounds. It's definitely not less than sixty.
And this will be paid in full and not a loan?
Right.
I don't know, I mean, why don't we just table it until we work out how it's being paid for, and we talk to the budget and finance man?
Then by that time, it's gonna be paid for the meat. That's how we vote to pay the truck.
Well, not last year.
Correct.
Last year was something different.
Because Bonnie, last year we bought a two-hundred-thousand-dollar truck. We were gonna put the hundred-thousand dollars towards it from liquid fuels when we got our deposit, because liquid fuels, you can only spend twenty percent of your balance for a truck. So we waited for the deposit, we were gonna put a hundred-thousand dollars towards the truck, and take a loan, a four-year loan for the balance. Bonnie, our budget and finance manager, was adamant that we should not take a loan, that we should just pay for it and pay back the general funds, which we all agree.
Well, I think, I think that's the time, I, I, I didn't want to...
Well, it, it somehow would pass.
Uh, yeah.
So moving forward, Bonnie said she intended, uh, Zoom class, or whatever it was, for liquid fuels, and her understanding is that you can't pay back the general funds from liquid fuels as a loan.
It's different. It has to be in the same year.
Correct, so a four-year loan, you can't have a four-year loan
Right.
from the general funds. That was her understanding. Now, we finance trucks commercially the same way in the past. We had JR truck, it's two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, same thing, we put a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand down, and we financed it, it was a four-year lease purchase. We bought it for a dollar on the year four. That was through a commercial entity. It wasn't through a general bank. So, it's not that there isn't precedent to do it, just a matter of how to pay back general, so and as you know, and everyone knows, what I've said when we put the budget together this year, that rather than expending general funds for a truck, we would pay for it out of liquid fuels, whatever that thirty-one thousand dollars a year was, to, to make the township whole, if you will. All township money. It's just taking out your left pocket and putting it in your right pocket. But, you satisfy...
I cannot borrow from liquid fuels to pay for fire cavities.
Agreed, that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't make any sense, I mean, that's...
It, it does, because now the general fund is sitting at less because it paid for the truck that was supposed to be refunded at...
And the general fund has sixty thousand dollars a year in it for a truck, so. So in twenty twenty three.
Less the hundred and twenty five thousand it was that you borrowed?
A hundred and twenty four thousand, I think, yeah.
Right, so the general fund is now a hundred and twenty, what, seventy four? It's a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars less.
General fund didn't pay sixty less. So technically, the general fund insured at sixty four, but to satisfy concerns. By some, what I said is that liquid fuels would pay for more than we normally do. To supplement the general cap, again, all township money.
And I'm asking, why the, if you buy a fifty eight thousand dollar truck, why not just pay for it all out of liquid fuel?
Because we have a budget in the general fund.
But you're going to pay thirty one thousand out of liquid fuels to reimburse as part of the four-year reimbursement, thirty one thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
To the general fund.
Correct.
Thank you.
But.
Nothing?
My call, though.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. It might, might bunny down. All right. That one just to cover the balance. Any public comment? Anyone on anything? All right, your favorite?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.